Good evening, folks, and welcome to the regular select board meeting here on January seventeenth. If you will join me in the pledge, we'll start our meeting. The orders have been circulated and have been signed. Waiting for you, Joe. We have a full contingent here at the select board room and Joe Donardo joins us on the Zoom call, so we have a full board meeting this evening. First order of business will be the approval of orders. We've done that. On the select board minutes, you have those in front of you. Two sets of minutes, one from December twentieth. I'd like to thank Bill for taking the time to put that full remark that I had in the minutes. Move to approve. Motion's been made to approve the minutes of December twentieth.
Second.
And seconded. Are there any additions, deletions, corrections to the minutes of number twentieth? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? None opposed, the minutes are approved, I'll circulate these for signature. The next set of minutes that you have in front of you are the minutes of the last meeting, January third. Move to approve. Second, a motion's been made to approve the minutes of January third and seconded. Are there any additions, deletions, corrections through the minutes of January third? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I abstain.
Thank you, Joe. Minutes are approved. Three. Zero. With two extensions. We'll circulate those for signature. Are there any board announcements?
Just a reminder again that articles for the pre-town meeting circle are due by February first to Chanel. So please, folks, especially if you're a candidate, you might want to write something.
Yep, just whenever we're going to take up the personnel.
I have one and I'll make this announcement both personally and on behalf of our board. I would just like to thank our fire department for their capable assistance to the Gilmore folks, to the Larson family, and to all the employees over there, and offer the board's condolences on a great family business, and we wish you the best, and we wish you we wish you a speedy recovery from this disaster, and I know that your spirit and your heart is there, and we're very, very happy that there were no there were no serious injuries. And we know you can replace the business, but we wish you the best as a town. And if you need any help, reach out to us. We'd be happy to assist as our fire department has with the event. And with that, I will entertain any questions or comments or presentations from the floor either on the Zoom call or here at the select board room. Anyone have anything? Hearing none, I guess we'll go right to department head reports, and first up is Barbara Pulling, Town Commission, Planning Commission chairperson. Good evening, Barb.
Good evening. Caught me off guard a little bit, moving some so quickly. So from the planning commission for the Pocket Park, our draft MOU with GMP is in GMP's hands right now. They're still a bit tied up with the relicensing for their hydroelectric facility, but hopefully we'll see something by the end of the month back from them, and then we can circulate that among the board members and have our town attorney look at it at that point. So that's pretty much what's going on with the Pocket Park. The Energy Committee, we will be meeting sometime soon to go over the energy survey and to look at a couple of new programs, ones from the state, and I think we talked about this last time, the municipal energy resilience program, where there's going to be quite a bit of money available statewide to every municipality to fix up, weatherize, put alternative energy equipment onto municipal buildings. And so that's still in the rolling out stage, but we'll be hearing more about that. One thing about that program, it appears as though they will give priority to municipalities that are considered energy burden. They pay more, on an average, their residents pay more for heat, electricity, and maybe transportation because they commute a longer distance than other towns. Rutland Town falls in the middle category. It's not a high energy burden, but it's a moderate energy burden. So we'll see how that plays out. Whether all of the high energy burden towns will apply for some of this money or not. And then it should move down the list. There's another energy resilience type project coming down from the federal level, DOE, nowhere near as much money, but the Rutland County municipalities can apply for a total of seventy seventy-six, seventy-five, seventy-six thousand dollars. So we'll be, the Energy Committee can take a look at that, too. And the eligible projects and ways to spend that money are like four pages long. It's just amazing. What will be eligible here, but there probably will be a little bit of competition for that as well. The city of Rutland is getting its own pool of money, so they are out of that equation for that amount. Other than that, in next week, we have a hearing for a subdivision. Nothing exciting here. It's it's one parcel now on Gale Grove Road, which is off Route four almost into Mendon. They want to just, they have a parcel of about eight acres. They want to make it into two parcels. No plans right now for development. There is a residence on the smaller parcel that will be if approved, but there's no plans for the other five plus acres that they want to subdivide. So that's pretty much what I have. Be glad to entertain any questions.
Any board members have any questions of Barbara this evening?
Barbara, an answer to your question by email, can we can we do something in February, an Energy Committee meeting in February rather than this month? This is grant writing, reporting month for me, and I'm swamped.
Sure, sure. You thinking early in the month?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll set some.
So noted. Any other questions for Barb? Well, thank you very much, Barb.
Okay, thank you.
Mike Delahanny, our first constable, is right here in the room with us. Good evening, Mike.
Good evening, everybody.
Good to see you walking tall.
Wow, honestly tall. Walking.
Right.
Not a ton to report, just wanted to let you know or advise you that last week I was up at the Police Academy for training for a program called A-Ride, which stands for Advanced Roadside Impaired Driving Enforcement. So what it does is it equips officers with the capability of detecting impairment outside of alcohol, so drug impairment. So I completed that course on Friday, and the nice part about it is with with Kenan Rooster coming on with Officer Plakis, he'll go through drug training, drug detection school, so the timing is actually going to be perfect. So once he's done his schooling between Officer Plakis and Rooster and myself, we should make a pretty good team. So great class. Learned a ton about different drug recognition out there. So yeah, that's all I had for you.
So you're fully certified now?
I am.
Yeah, great.
So yeah, so it was, it's just like it said, it's an advance from outside of finding alcohol impairments for drug detection.
So you want to become a DRE next?
So that's a pretty intense course. I'm not against it a hundred percent. I'd be very interested, but it's a seventy-two hour course.
Drug recognition expert.
Yeah, yeah. And there's not enough of them in the state, so I'm definitely, I'm interested. It's a, it's a.
So do you happen to know what percentage of officers have your certification now? Is it, I know it's getting more popular and more popular, but.
Yeah, so the A-Ride program itself, you have, I believe it's three years once you become fully certified to take this program. The DRE portion of it, although there's not enough of them in the state, and I think in the whole entire state of Vermont, I think there's forty-one DREs. And we have some extremely well-qualified DREs in Rutland County, but they're always looking for more, so.
That's the one that Ed was referring to?
Yeah, yeah, that's the next level up from the course that I just took.
Yeah, that's pretty intense.
It is, it is. So it's a seventy, seventy-two hour course. So, but.
Does it have to be taken in one fell swoop, or can you work towards it?
All at once. Yeah, I'm pretty sure it's all at once. So I think it's over the course, obviously, a couple, a few weeks.
So is it residential or?
So yeah, they brought it up at the academy last week. I believe they had the capabilities holding it in the state of Vermont now, before they used to send you to, I believe, New Hampshire. So, DRE, I think they're now able to hold it in Vermont.
California, but there's enough counties in Rutland County now, we should be able to do it right.
Yeah. Yeah, that's right, that's right. Yeah.
That call progress, Ed.
So, yeah, now that was the update I had for you, so.
That's it. Any questions for our first constable?
Is the speed cart in use these days?
It should be put up this time of year.
Oh, put up as in not used this time of year?
Correct.
Okay.
Last year it was on clinical, is it still there?
I think so. I haven't seen it in a couple, I haven't been up there in a couple of weeks.
Okay.
Last time it had in the road, it got a little salty and kind of messed things up, so.
Good deal. All right, everybody, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mike. Have a nice evening and.
You as well, thank you.
Stay safe. Our next report is John Paul Pagnan, our town health officer, public safety building clerk, and second constable. Good evening, JP.
Hey, good evening. Good evening, folks. Nothing to report on any of the three fonts other than I left you two sets of elevations and interior plans. One set is posted on your bulletin board in your meeting room there, and the other Bill has that he can then put on particle board for your town meeting. But that's, you know, it's a modest building, but that's what we've always said we were planning for. It's the interior of the building that really matters, and for that, I think we've covered most of the bases. Other than that, I don't have anything else to report.
Okay. You, JP, you are aware of the grant proposals that Officer Washburn is, Deputy Chief Washburn is working on right now?
I am.
Good. That should hopefully, if that, if that comes to fruition, that'll be well over another hundred thousand dollars to be added to the mix. Hopefully that happens.
We did have a good amount of interest shown at the pre-bid meeting that was held last Thursday. So, and they have, I forget their deadline for submitting the bids, but it's early February. So that process is moving right along. I've had some calls from some subs that want to get in the building that, you know, might want to look at what demolition and things like that, but I'm readily available to let them in when they want to get in.
Right, and we hadn't, we hadn't formally discussed this, but I'm assuming, and I hope I'm correct, that you will be available pre-town meeting and town meeting evening to answer any questions or give a short presentation on where we are in terms of the building.
Yeah, no, I can't commit to that at this point. We'll have to see how the time develops over the next couple of weeks.
Could we make arrangements so that somebody could do that?
Sure.
If you can?
We can do that.
Okay. Thank you, JP. Anybody have any questions for John Paul?
Thanks for getting the elevations in, JP. They look good.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You, too. Okay. Our next report will be Mike Rowe, our town recreation director, who is here and.
Good evening, all. How are you?
Good evening, Mike.
Not much. Want to thank, a shout out to the fire department and Billy. They started, it's been a very interesting winter, but they started filling the rink last week, and they will continue the next day or two. And then hopefully Mother Nature will say cold for a while and not, you know, swim because we don't have lifeguards for them. But anyway, so hopefully that will freeze up and we'll be able to get some people skating. Basketball's in full swing. Billy has taken the time to create a new online forum for our signup for our recreation activities. He's still working through the kinks, so we're hoping that for our spring signups, that you'll be able to sign up right online, not pay online, because we'll work on that next. But at least sign up online, and that will generate the list so much more efficiently than me taking and typing everything that I'm trying to read from somebody's handwriting and getting it correct. So a big thank you to Bill for putting that together, and hopefully that will make all of our jobs a lot easier in the future moving forward, and it'll be completely an online signup form.
So you haven't completed the usual teacher course in reading hieroglyphics?
No, I have not, and I refuse to take that class. It's gotten me in trouble trying too many times. Other than that, basketball's in full swing. We had a ton of games. We have a ton of games coming up. This is the busy time, and the kids are doing wonderful. And everything's running nice and smoothly. Other than that, I don't have much, unless anybody has anything or any questions.
You wanted a committee meeting with me, so figure out when you want to do it, sooner than later.
Yeah, we'll plan one. I don't, yeah, we will definitely plan one.
Good.
Are there any other?
Any other questions, Mike?
I don't know if they're seeing you launching it soon or not. The date, do they take a break for the winter months? Is that what they typically do?
Two months.
Two months, so you'll kick back in in March? Okay. All right. Did we do anything with the Fourth of July yet? I know it's early. Has anything been, like, are we going on the Fourth? Are we going back to the Third? Is there just out of curiosity, I just want to plant that seed. I know everyone's in budget mode, and but Billy, usually we do something early, correct?
Well, we have a tentative date, right, Bill?
I think we're planning on the Fourth. That's, well, it's a Tuesday, so we want to plan for the Fourth, we want to plan for a weekend.
Well, last year they gave us kind of not an option, but an option, correct? I don't know, I just want to get ahead of it because it is coming up pretty quickly, and they usually send out the contract.
Well, we're not doing our usual vendor, apparently, so.
There's, yeah, there's, things are changing, so.
Oh, okay, that's fine. Yeah, that's fine, not a problem. I've just I knew that was coming up soon, and we could chat.
Yeah, we, we opted not, we opted not to spend fifteen grand, so.
That's okay.
We're.
Not a problem. No problem. All right, that's all I really have.
Any other questions? No?
Awesome.
Thank you very much, Mike.
Thank you very much. Have a great evening. Drive safe.
Our next report will be from Chris Clark, our town police, or yeah, fire chief, looking down here. Chris, you on?
I'm here.
Okay.
Just one, just one thing tonight. The guy that owns the new splash car wash has been in contact with me about trying to help him get the old ground round building ripped down. They're way behind schedule. The new building was already supposed to be up, but he's running into a bunch of problems with a with the mall owners trying to get a right of way and Act two fifty, and he was just asking if there's anything we could do to help, so I told him I would bring it to you guys and ask to see if there's anything we could do to help get the process going. So any suggestions you have?
Yeah, the chief spoke to me about this. The attorney for the mall, and I think it's the mall that's kind of the holdup right now? Okay.
Yeah, that's what he says.
The attorney for the mall is David Grayk. It's G R A Y C K. So I would suggest Bill maybe connect, call David Grayk and see if there's anything the town can do to facilitate moving this along. Other than that, it's kind of a private deal between two landowners. We can express interest and concern and offer help, but.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll let him know.
Okay.
Chris, I have a quick, Chris, what exactly is the right of way problem that they're talking about? I don't understand that. That building.
The mall owns from Route seven up, apparently, and they're making him pay thirty-six thousand dollars from his entrance to his parking lot to Route seven. So he looked into, cheaper to pay them than it is to build a new road, so. But he's waiting for one of the owners to sign off on it, on it, so he can get Markowski's in there to start ripping the building down. Apparently, he can't have Markowski's drive on there because he doesn't legally have a right of way.
So there was, there was no agreement between the mall owners and Ground Round or whatever was there prior that would go with that, or or is this just some kind, because this bill, this doesn't even make sense to me that this doesn't have anything to do with an abandoned vacant property. I mean, are they that desperate for money that they're, they're trying to blackmail this guy out of thirty-six thousand dollars? There's got to be some record of agreement that goes with that property that allowed the building that was in there to be there, and you would think once there's a right of way, it goes with the property. I didn't think it changed with each new owner.
Yeah. I don't know. That's just what he told me, but his biggest concern right now is people are breaking in there and they're absolutely destroying the place. I actually went in there the other day and walked through with one of the engineers. I mean, they, somebody even went on the roof and stole one of the big air handlers, so now there's a giant hole in the roof.
Oh, that's terrible.
Coppers been stolen, all the wires been cut. They even cut something out of the transformer, and Green Mountain Power had to go and clean up all the oil. So it's starting to be a big nuisance for everybody, but he was just wondering if there's something we could help him out with.
Mary, would there be anything, Mary, in the Act two fifty about access to that when, when these buildings were built that gave them access to that short stretch of the entrance road? Would that be a condition of Act two fifty?
I'm not sure it would be a condition, but if there were any kind of an agreement, it should be in the land records.
Sure, it should.
Yeah, because, because you know, this may already be in place.
Well, Bill, when Bill talks to Attorney Grayk, we, he should probably also outline our concerns about the vandalism and theft and the nuisance on the property.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I, I agree with you a hundred percent, Joe. I really think that we should have a positive proactive conversation, Bill, with that attorney.
Yeah, this is the same type of BS they were pouring on BJ's.
Yeah.
You know, and if they're not going to do something with their property, they need to really knock it off.
Right, I agree.
Down to. If they want to do something successful with that mall, then I advise they do that.
Yeah.
Do something with, get some business.
My comment to them, and to back up what you're saying, Kurt, is, and it was the same comment that we had way back when. Unfortunately, the board chose to take another tactic, but my comment back then was when BJ's was in there is that we should get real tough with them and say, look, you know, we've supported the mall from day one, from its very early existence. We agreed not to, not to fight them, but to try to help them out any way we could because we were pro-development. And if that's the thanks we get, then when, when the next. And if that's the thanks we get, then when, when the next phase comes and they intend to do something. I would hope that they'd want to count on our help then as well.
Yeah.
And, and we'd love to be able to give it, but it's a two-way street here. You know?
We, we need to find.
Nothing offensive about that project being done. And I, I've been reading the two fifty, uh. I've been reading the two fifty. And what do I want to say? The, uh. The filings in, in two fifty concerning Splash Holdings and the Diamond Run Mall and it, and it appeared to me that it was only. Traffic that they were interested in. I never read anything about, uh, a payment for an access. So I don't know when this came up.
This is, yeah. I think it's, it's something we should definitely be looking into as a town for sure.
Yeah.
Try, try to help these people out that want to bring a good business to our area.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else, Chris?
That's all I had tonight, Don. Thank you.
What, Chris, could you give us just a little bit of a, uh, maybe just a little bit on, on your, uh, on your mutual aid support to Castleton?
Uh, sure, uh. They asked for, uh. Certified air pack people, so we sent over, I think nine or ten of us went over. Um, by the time we got there, it was not really a interior fight anymore. Um, so we helped with water supply and, you know, setting up deck guns and. Whatever they needed, we, we helped out with, but I mean, there was. It was pretty impressive, the amount of people and equipment that was over there trying to help the Larsons and. Uh, I mean, unfortunately, it didn't go as well as everybody hoped, but the fire had. Quite a jump on us, so there's nothing we could really do about it, but we were there to help and they appreciated it.
Good. Thank you. Any questions of our fire chief? Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You too.
Carrie, you want to go next since you're, he's on your phone?
Sure. Alright, sorry Dave, I think you're next.
You'll pay.
Uh, I'll be quick. How's that?
Alright.
Alright, um, around ninety-four percent of our second installment taxes were, um, paid this past tenth of January. Uh, so that's not bad at all. In your orders, um, you'll see the, the school gets their cut of that. Um, and the check is, is in that, and that's why the, um. The amount is significant. Uh, because when we get our property taxes, we hand most of it over to the school. Uh, let's see, dogs are still open till April first. Just a quick reminder. Um, and in your, I believe I put it in the pink folder in front of you, Don. Um, is, is kind of the way that, uh, the liquor licenses are going to go for this year. Uh, a little different because it's a portal now, um, the Department of Liquor Control has everything online. For, um, people to renew their license. Um, and it makes it slightly complicated for my end of things. Reached out to another clerk and asked her how she's handling. Uh, renewals because it doesn't look like what it has looked like in the past. Um, she simply said, um, when we get notification, which I do by email now. Um, to go into the portal. Print off a quick list of who is asking for a renewal or who is asking for anything. Um, and that's what you see in front of you is, uh, two lines on a piece of paper, basically. Um, and it's for Sandry, if I say that right, on Route seven. Yeah, um, so they're asking for renewal. Um, and once you approve a renewal, I will manually go into the portal and just hit the approve button. Um, but what I.
Question, Carrie?
Uh huh.
Uh, this is a blank sheet of paper other than those two lines. There's no signature lines here. There's no indication. Does it need to be signed by all five members or can the board simply authorize me to sign and is that going to be effective? Because there's no lines on the paper at all.
Uh, exactly. That is one thing the clerk, um, in Killington and I were talking about how we don't like this setup at all. Um, so she just basically has her, I, I think one signature will just justify it. For me, what I'll do is keep that original piece of paper in our binder that we always keep anyway. Um, and that way the backup and any minutes maybe that we, um, have for these meetings, I'll attach it to it. I'm hoping that they revamp it slightly. It just doesn't seem quite. Right yet, but I gotta go with what they're giving us right now. So if I can just, you know, try to cover my butt. Um, just signatures and I'll keep originals and go from there. So right now it's just the Sandry place. Um, I, I know that we have more coming. Um, but nothing as of yet, just those, that one. So I would just say one signature is fine.
Okay, well, we, I would think we would cover ourselves by making a motion to that effect that, that, that. Unless notified otherwise that, you know, we would. If we approve these, that we would approve them with the board chairman signing on behalf of the board. That'll save us some time because. We've had to sign all five of us on the correct line before.
Right.
Good.
So there's that. Go ahead.
Or is that for later?
It can be up for approval now. We might as well do it under Carrie's report if the board chooses to do that.
For, I think it's just wine and beer sales in there.
This is tobacco and second class license.
Okay. I would move we approve, and I'm going to ask the chief if there are any complaints about Sandry. Okay, I would move we approve Sandry's, um, tobacco and second class. License and authorize the chair to sign on behalf of the select board.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded, uh, to approve these two applications, one for tobacco license and one for second class license for Sandry. Um, and that I signed. Are there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, uh, it's a vote.
And just a, a quick side note, um, the, the other clerk and I were talking about if we ever had anyone new ask for a liquor license. That, um, she has in the past and I would. As well, um, invite them to a select board meeting, um, if they are a new business asking for something like that. So. We're just trying to cover every bit and all, you know, all the things that we feel like are not. Quite right with this portal system yet. So that's just a side note. And, um.
Okay, that's, that's in the packet and signed right now, Carrie.
Okay, great. Thank you. Uh, last reminder that anyone, um, asking to be on the ballot as a, um, an article. Uh, the petition for that, um, including signatures of five percent is due on the nineteenth, so that's this week. Um, and then anyone wishing to be, um, on the ballot, running for an open position. Um, in the town, the petitions, which is one percent of our signatures, one percent of our voters. Do on the thirtieth of January. So those are two quick reminders. And then the very last thing that I have is, um, it has to do with the articles and I. Don't know if this is a good time to talk about it. You're welcome to talk about it at another time tonight. Um, I'm trying to get the warning, um, all done for the town report for. Pre-town meeting for Matt Geddy, who's going to read that. Um, and as well as a draft for the ballot for the company that prints those. So there's lots of deadlines coming up very, very quickly and so far I have one. Um, article that I believe is up for approval tonight. Um, about the local options tax wording. And I was wondering if there are more coming, um, and who's working on them so that I can get all this done.
Uh, that will be up for discussion in executive session. There's one that's in the packet here and we can discuss that right now if you choose to do that, board, uh. That's the wording that Joe had suggested. I. I tried to put it in. Uh. See where it is here, it's right at the end somewhere. Where did that thing go? Was just in here? Oh, it's in the end of our pa, it's in our packet. I'm sorry. It's at the, it's the, it's item E in your packet. And the wording is, Joe, you correct me if I'm wrong. Um, the wording is shall the town of Rutland use any unallocated one percent local option tax funds? Comma, not to exceed a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, comma. To meet any regional dispatch obligations imposed by the state of Vermont.
Um, yeah, that's pretty cool. Pretty much. I just didn't know if the wording should be that, um, shall the voters authorize the select board? To use any on, I don't know how, is, is that the way it is or, or is this good? I always thought. Um, we were asking voter approval for the board to use that money.
Well, we are the town, so.
Yeah.
I would suggest since we're going to be chatting with town council later that we ask him to just take a quick look at this and make sure it's in the appropriate form.
Okay, because I, I don't, that would be the only question I would have. Otherwise, this is the intent of, uh, what, what I brought up.
Okay, I'm putting a note on here, town or select board. Instead. Okay. We'll have an answer by the end of the evening, I would assume, Carrie, for you tomorrow.
Okay, as long as I get.
On that and any other, any other, uh, items that would go on there.
Great, that's all I ask really, um.
Um, I, I did have that as a question too, um. When are, when are we going to be able to sign the final warning? Because the select board all has to sign, which. I think the, usually we go to pre-town meeting and then we have a quick meeting after. To approve, um, the warning, the budgets in particular, in case there's any change. So what's our deadline for getting things, that particular thing to the printer?
Um, I think that if you guys do that, um, after pre-town meeting, then that'll be just perfect. Um, as long as I had something for Matt to read at pre-town meeting. So everything's ready to go except for those articles. And then afterwards, if you have to change anything, do it right after that meeting and then I'll send it off to the printer the next day.
Well, I guess I'm, I'm sort of, if for example, somebody gets up and says, you know, you've got an error here in. Somebody's budget, you need to correct it and we need to do some research. Um, how, what is the deadline for getting it to the printers? In case we need a little more than just at the end of our pre-town meeting.
Yeah, I don't know the deadline, but I'm assuming it is like super quick. I can look at the exact date. And I say super quick because, um, if you, well, if you think about it, um, we would have to get absentee ballot. Uh. Ballots out to those people well in advance before town meeting, which is the seventh of March.
Yeah, yeah, no, I understand, but if we could just know what that deadline is. Because I, I've got to tell you, in the past, I've looked over some of the. Um, some of the, um, warning articles and they have had to be changed. So I want to give us a little time, other than rubber stamping something at the end of the pre-town meeting. Um, I want to give us a little time to look it over and just double check against the numbers that we have.
Okay. That out, um, tomorrow, look into it and get you a date and send you an email with an answer as soon as I get it.
Good, thank you, Carrie.
You're welcome. And that's pretty much all I have.
Good, Carrie. Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Have a nice evening.
You too.
Our next patient reporter will be Dave Sears, our town road commissioner.
Hello, everyone. Has it started to sleet yet? It's the other S word we don't say. Uh, last couple of weeks, we spent, um, just kind of cleaning up from the last month, really. Spent a day and a half, uh, cleaning up a bunch of trees that came down in the last two storms, two big storms. Um, and then we spent a half a day with Menden, cleaning up a bunch of stuff that came down up on Town Line Road. And then we spent a day and a half-ish, uh, filling potholes, um. Quarterline Road and Boardman Hill are taking it hard this year with this whole freeze thaw thing is driving us nuts, but. Uh, we did go out and fill some asphalt potholes too, so. And if anybody knows of any, because we're not on every street every day, so if anybody knows of any, give us a call and let us know where they are so we can. Well, chase those down. Um, I did take a trip to Westminster last week, uh, to look at, uh, some trucks down at Patriot. Um, waiting to hear back from them on a couple of different options. I reached out to them today and they said they tried to get something to me today, but that hasn't come in yet, but we got time, so. Um, kind of exploring all the options on that. Thursday, we had that little snow squall came in. That was. Fun. Just kind of came out of nowhere and. And how we went, so, um, the contractors have been called out about fourteen times so far. So we're in pretty good shape on that. Uh, building's full of salt. We're ready to rock for whatever this week brings us. And where we are.
What is fourteen relative to the date? High or low?
Pretty good.
I would say it's pretty good with. I mean, they go into extra innings at forty-three and we're halfway through January, so.
Yeah, they're, they're quite a ways farther ahead than where they normally be.
Right.
Yes, that's pretty good.
Okay. Good. Any questions of the road commissioner?
No, I don't have a question, Don, but should we do the certificate of highway mileage while Dave's up?
Yeah, we might as well. I was going to bring that up because it's in the packet. It's in my packet.
I'd move that, um, we authorize that.
There's room for. There's room for our signatures on here for all of us.
So no change from last year?
Nope.
Okay.
Total miles, fifty-eight, fifty-eight point one four two miles of. No change. Is there a motion?
Joey did.
I made a motion.
Don't, motion, sorry about that. Reading, reading the, uh, reading the sheet, uh, motion's been made and seconded to sign the certificate of highway mileage for the year ending February tenth. Twenty twenty-three. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And not opposed, all circulated for signature.
State will be very pleased.
When do we get our money?
Uh, that has to be by February twenty-third, I believe, so.
Uh, Dave, Dave, don't we get, um, the state aid comes like quarterly? I think that's what Susan and Carrie told me. We get a part of that estimated amount like quarterly. Is that right?
I believe so. I don't have my, I don't have it all down yet, but I'm, I think that's how it comes.
So this will actually be for like the next fiscal year.
Correct. Yeah.
Okay, that's signed and in the packet. Anything else? Thank you very much, Dave.
Thank you, guys.
Our next report will be from Ed Dumas, our town police chief. Ed is here with us, good evening, Ed.
I don't have much tonight either, to be honest with him. Fifty-four calls to service plus twenty-two traffic stops. Usual stuff. Still busy at the south end, not too bad this last week, period. Uh, over the weekend, we had, I think. At least three on the board that the state police didn't handle, and I know that I got a few texts. And phone calls from Tractor Supply, Bed Bath & Beyond and. Working on. Any questions about? Calls for service. The other thing is, I haven't got a, we haven't got a call back, my fault, and we just called them today, the Dodge dealership here in Rollin. Uh, the guy we used to deal with is not there anymore, so Ted's made three or four phone calls, I haven't heard back, it's, it's like Monday, so. And it's a holiday weekend, so I suspect by the end of the week we'll hear something back and we'll have it next time around, hopefully. On the cruiser.
With personnel policy.
Yes.
I understand, and we visited a bit, probably. A month ago.
December sixteenth, was it?
Yeah, yeah, it was in the minutes.
Yes.
Um, the police disciplinary process should not be governed by our. Town policy, personnel policy, it should be governed and by state statute, it is governed by state statute, so we need to put. A sentence somewhere in there that exempts the police department from the. Um, personnel policies, disciplinary action and defer to state statute on that. Um, has anybody come up with any language on that?
Uh, kinda went out of my head until I was brought to my attention earlier today.
Okay. All right, we should do that.
You know, I'd like a clarification of that whole issue, though. Because the state does not hire our police department, we do.
Don, it's like, uh, it's like if the town hired a doctor. But, but you guys, the town doesn't know anything about being a doctor. So therefore, they have their own little. Doctors that keep track of them to make sure they don't step out of line, so they do.
Right, no, I'm.
They pull their license away.
Okay, so listen, listen to me.
So that's, that's the way the police are run now.
I'm not questioning, I'm not questioning the fact that disciplinary policy as it relates to police activities. Should not be controlled by the state's policy on police officers. But there are a lot of other things that involve an employee of the town. That have absolutely nothing to do with police activities and you can't be exempt from them.
No, no, that wasn't the suggestion.
Oh, well, no.
The police disciplinary part, and what I suggest we do, since we're gonna be visiting with town council in a bit. We ask him to come up with some language to take care of that.
Right, okay, now, is that the only? Is that the only issue that the police department had with the personnel policy? Because we've been trying to get this thing kind of. So at least signed off on.
So I suggested months ago that. The board should sit down with the employees of the town, cuz there's some questions that came up and you haven't done that yet. So I, I'll make, I think if you guys sit down with employees of town and. Present it to them to take away their fears and any concerns they have on why and how you did it. And whatever else they have, I think that you guys can do that. I don't think it'll be a problem, but.
Would you see? What time would be convenient for your department? And then, they wanna meet with us first or? We've gotta simplify this because it's, it's hard to get five board members to. Especially in this timeframe, but.
What timeframe do we have for this?
When it's convenient for you, I mean, you suggested, you suggested time.
I think it's better that we should do it sooner than later.
Right.
There's people in this town that are being filmed. And you'll correct me if I'm wrong, it's feeling threatened by the board that we're trying to ramrod. And I think we need to clarify that, am I correct?
Yeah, I agree. I, I don't think it's an insurmountable thing, I think that. Once you answer some questions and tell them why and all the reasons you went through it, I don't think it'll be a big deal.
Okay, well, you've got more people to deal with than we do, it's just for, for the present time, it's, it's Sharon and me on the personnel committee and then we can. You know, if we. If we handle that and we can get back to the board if there are changes need to be made or whatever.
We'll still have to get back to the board just to get clarified on. Or documented.
But you give us a time and a date and a time.
I'll show you guys an email.
Yep, good.
All right, thanks, Ed.
Super, and then uh. I guess that's it, days in and out, nothing about them? Okay.
What was that? What was that known? Okay.
Good, um, Bill Sweet, our town administrators, next up.
Okay, but something, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. Something has to be changed in public.
Good evening.
In which report? After.
Go ahead, Bill.
Okay, uh, so just a few things to go through, um. The, I, I, the extra items in the packet, there's a couple of things under new business uh, that those fall under. Um, that's B and C, uh, I'm sorry, B and E in the packet are for new business items. And then, um. In the packet, uh, there's a, we received a letter from uh, game one, you'll get a chance to read that. Unfortunately.
What's that now?
The letter in the, in the letter we received from game one.
Yeah.
Um, so really, it was just, and just informing us what's going on, so really not much more than that. Uh, and then, uh, we did get a quote from Royals for uh, work. On installing uh, locks for the filing cabinets. In the Lister's office, this would be to retrofit it, um, remember I reached out to. Vermont Correctional Industries, see if they can do it and they don't exist anymore, so um, this would, this, this was the option. Um, I think. Marcia's on, I don't know if she wanna talk about it or not, but um, the only other thing that her and I kinda talked about would be to. Move the files that are in that filing cabinet to the metal ones that do have a lock on them and just. Bunch of shifting the files around, it's, it's a lot of work. But I don't know, she, she wanted to have the board make a decision on it.
What's the cost of a new filing cabinet?
Uh. An additional fi- additional filing cabinets?
Like, I was just wanting, like.
We can't get them, the ones we have were made by Vermont Correctional Industry and they're no longer existence, so we can't. I, I went to them to see if we could do something and, and the guy says my shop is cleaned out, so.
Okay.
Um.
What is Vermont Correctional?
That's the, the.
Furniture, like our tables.
They're the ones that made all the furniture for the office, for the offices, yeah.
Yep.
One of the best programs they ever had and they did away with it.
Really?
I can speak, I can speak to that, um, we recently had a um, webinar with PV and R. Where they suggested that um, business personal property has to be kept up there, up. Under lock and key, and they suggested we put it in the vault, well, there's no way that. We can put, put it in our vault, we just do not have the room. And unfortunately, our real estate files, which are up on lock and key. Outweigh the business personal property, so the only way we can keep the business personal property. Under lock and key is with new locks.
So, so can we, Marcia, can we put new locks on those cabinets?
That's what this is.
Yeah, that's what, that's what that is, Sharon, that's the uh. The, the locks in themselves are inexpensive, unfortunately, the labor is what's expensive.
So, since we spent a whole lot, not a whole lot of money, but we have these nice new cabinets that match everything in the building. Um, had we known that um, requirement existed. When we ordered those, we would've had the locks put in them, so I would move that we accept Royals' uh. Proposal to add the locks, those, those are just too new and too nice of cabinets to replace or get something different and just move forward.
Second.
Thanks, Joey.
Motion.
Yeah.
Motion made and seconded to approve the Royal. Royal group uh, proposal for locks for the. Uh, business personal property and inventory tax files in the Lister's office at. Seven hundred and sixty-one dollars and forty-four cents.
And Donna, note to that, 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 this, yeah, just that this money would come from the uh, building maintenance fund.
Is that correct, Bill?
If you wanted to, sure.
Well, no.
That's, that's the most likely, that's the most likely place.
Yeah, that would be where we would get it.
And to be paid for out of the, the uh, building maintenance fund, uh, you've heard the motion and it's been seconded, is there any further discussion on the? Motion?
A question for Marcia, it's not sufficient that we lock the Lister's office when nobody's there?
Well, yeah, it is, Mary, but um, you know, at any time. I mean, somebody could come in, we do have the office locked, when I'm not there, the office is always locked, um. So, but I would just feel more secure if the filing cabinets were locked.
Okay.
Well, especially since PV and R is suggesting that they'd be in the vault, I think.
Yeah, that's not gonna happen.
It's not happening. Or any other, any other comments, questions or discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
There are any opposed? Hearing none, oh, signature of authorized representative.
A move that we authorize the chair of the select board to sign the quote. Authorizing the work to go ahead.
Okay.
All right, motion's made and seconded and thirded. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, sign.
Can I ask a Marcia question while she's on?
Sure.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, um, Marcia, you and I had talked about um, your. Need for a license to work remotely because you get the occasional calls at your home at night. Has that matter been resolved?
Um, I, I think it has, Mary, um, and I'm, I'm not asking for a license. To work from home remotely, um, you know, fifty percent or, or whatever percent of the time. The only reason I'm asking for it is I need to take several webinars that, um. That would be difficult for me to take during the actual working time, and if I could take them. You know, at home on the weekend or after hours, um, it would help me a lot.
Yeah, well, I have no problem, and if you need any motion from us to facilitate that, you'll let us know.
Um, yeah, if you wish to make a motion tonight, then.
I made the motion.
Be happy with it.
Need a motion, Bill?
I don't, I don't think so, because I, and, and talking with her, the, 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 what she's looking to do is different than what. What like Howard, Howard was doing, he was accessing the files, she's just. Working from home, like email, things like that, which you don't need the remote access for, so I think, uh, when, when, when she's in, I'll, I'll, I'll make sure we're all set, but I don't. Think we need it, but regardless, the expenses such that we don't need any decision on it, we just do it, so.
Okay, good. Did you hear all of that, Marcia? Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Uh, all right, a couple of things were on your desk. Uh, one is a water connection request. Um. This is from Ted and Erica Washburn for seventeen oh one Post Road. Uh, anticipation of a new connection, uh, so he is just getting the connection request from us and then he's working with the city also on their side of it. And then eventually will be coming to us for a wastewater allocation, but this is all they need right now, this is a pretty straightforward one, so.
Yeah, move we approve the water connection request for, it's the Lay Adams property and Ted Washburn is. The applicant for this.
Motion made and seconded to approve this water application for Ted and Erica Washburn on the Lay Adams property, uh. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 And none opposed, this doesn't require a signature bill, does it?
Nope, no.
Okay.
Uh, the other thing is a copy of the agenda for the pre-town meeting, uh. Same as we did. Last year, uh, so that's just for immediately following, like we talked about before, to approve. Any changes you make to the uh, to the ballot or the budget. Uh, so. Uh, we're talking about deadlines before.
Yeah.
Um, that's kind of it, so, um, because it's gotta get in the town report. Uh, so we don't really have a lot more time than that to come up with a final draft. Uh, along those lines, um, it's not done, the town report is not done yet, cuz I'm still waiting for a couple submissions from. A couple of different people, um, they're both aware and just, just waiting to get the information to us, so we've, I've got most of it. Um. I've got all the department reports, I, most everything from our end is, is it just a couple of things from the school and a couple of things, and one thing from our auditor and then we'll be. In good shape, um. The. We typically do six to eight pictures, our pages of pictures, we do not have a. We've not had the opportunity to take a board picture in, in quite some time, so we don't have one for that, uh. Do we want to include picture pages again? They basically would be a reprint of last year at this point, cuz they're, they're it. Um, if we don't do it, it. Will save us about five, about five hundred bucks if we.
There you go, don't do it.
So, it's, it's, it's up to me whether we want to include it or not, we do not have an updated board picture.
I don't know about the rest of you.
So we, we could not do it this year and. Yeah.
Well, it's quite a change from historical.
You have. We, we have a couple of changes, though.
I think putting pictures in there is worthwhile, but if we're going to do them, we should, they should all be updated and there's just really not the opportunity to do that, so. We wouldn't be able to get, unless, like, you all five get together to do a picture, so.
There's two reasons.
Next Wednesday, next Monday night, the five of us should be together at the school.
We, there's good reason why we should improve the pictures and, and, you know. First of all, the board has changed and.
Yep.
And, and second.
We also have a new road commissioner.
The highway department has changed, and I really think it, I really think that the public has a right to see the pictures of the people that are the new employees of the town. I really do.
I was hoping, I was hoping to get dieted in first, but. I was hoping to get dieted in first, I guess.
You and I, like, behind the other or one in front of the other?
Can you try and get pictures between now and?
I'll, I'll see what I can do.
A board picture next.
We need to, yeah, by, by, cuz it's, it's, it's.
If we get the board picture next Monday.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that, that's fine, we wanna, wanna do that, no, no problem, I just, we, we're, we're running short on, on times to get things, to get things in, so.
How many are you short, Bill?
The pictures?
No, the reports and whatever.
I, I, we're waiting for uh, Andrew, we've asked Andrew to send us the report in a format. With, which we can actually make it fit in the, in the town report, uh. Otherwise, it, it, it's goes from like fourteen pages to seven pages. Goes from like fourteen pages to seven pages, if we can, if we can get a, a new format, it makes it half as, half as long, so. It's all the same, same information, just we can shrink it down, it just can't do it in the format he sent it to us in, um, we're waiting.
Don't be shrinking me down.
Nope, it's just, it's just his numbers. Um, and the school, we're waiting for the school warning and a couple of their reports are, are, they haven't gotten a couple of their reports to me, um. Other than that, we've got, um, I was waiting, we got. Um, to, we wanted to put in some updated information on the public safety building and we had to get that worked out, so that was done today. Uh, and. I think that's it. Um, yeah, it's mostly Andrew, Andrew stuff and a couple of things from the school, so on that, we're, we're in good shape, so. But.
A request on what you do have for the warning, could we get that before the pre-town meeting, I mean.
Sure.
Okay, yeah, no, I know you and Carrie work together somewhat.
Well, she, she has the warning, she just get, she just, she just sends me that file and I print it off and put it in there, so that's, that all comes from, that all comes from her.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep, so, sure, you can have it.
So, where's, the, where's the language for the uh. Signing. Is that in, is that in the packet? Oh yeah, that's B. So, we've already approved this, right?
No.
No.
Oh, we haven't, no, because we were waiting for the school and she said, fine, that's, it's okay with her.
Lynn, Lynn said the school board talked about it and they're fine with it. So, it's back to. It's logged it back to us.
What's your uh.
Well, I'm really uncomfortable with parts of this, I mean, basically it. It gives the Select Board the authority to remove signs if somebody didn't get the Select Board's permission. Um, it gives the Select Board the right to tell individuals or organizations. That they lose their right to place signs for an election if they, if we perceive that they violate rules. I'm just really uncomfortable with. Um, we were supposed to work on a sign policy, I think about a year and a half ago, and. Nothing came of it, so. I'm not gonna approve it for this upcoming election thing, and I think it needs, there needs to be more thought in it anyway.
Good enough.
So I'm not prepared to act on it tonight.
That's a fair point.
You feel the same, Kurt?
One, after she said it, yeah.
Yeah, me too.
When I originally read it. It didn't seem, but now that. It does make sense that, you know, the, the Select Board could. In a, in a way, well, they could pers, you, you wouldn't want to do it, but the Select Board could almost persuade an election by removal of. Signs with the policy and.
I just think that's, yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
That's scary.
Yeah, I, I guess, yeah, I guess some more thought has to go into that one, a little bit. I just, yeah.
Well, if that's feeling of the board, then that's what we're gonna do, is we're gonna hold off on it. I don't think it's gonna affect this election in, in any case, uh, and, and or has it affected? Elections previously, not, not in recent history anyway.
Yeah, but I, but Kurt has a point, um. You know, I'm running for election, so is Mary, so if you, if, if John Coop Public was gonna run. And we decided to pull their signs because they weren't the right size. It almost is like a conflict of interest, I just, I'm not comfortable.
Yeah, it could get a little sketchy there.
Yeah.
In the past, when we've had sign policies. Proposed, we've run them by the two political parties in town too, um, just for their input, they, actually, they killed one. Proposal years ago, but still, we asked for their input and we got it.
There you are.
Yeah.
You will always get an opinion from a political party.
Oh, and not just one either, no, no.
Here we go.
Well, I, you know, that, I hadn't thought of that, but that's an interesting. Feature of this policy is that it, it affects candidates for office.
Oh, yeah.
Of which Select Board members are candidates for office at given times, and yet they have to vote on. Another candidate's ability or inability to place a sign. That would seem like a conflict of interest in and of itself.
Yeah. Yeah.
Except for the fact that if it's, if it's defined. If the policies are explicitly defined in there. What difference does it make whether you're running or whether you're not, if it says that you gotta have a sign and it can't be bigger than this, and somebody comes up with one that's like. Four times as big, then they haven't complied.
So if Kurt goes around and rips my sign down, I'm probably gonna rip his head out.
Well, he's certainly gonna shut off the supply of whoopee pies.
Yeah.
Yes, sir, and then if I can reach his.
I'm smarter, I'm smarter than that, Sharon.
Anyway, let's.
Shave him any closer than he's got. Okay, that's fine, the, the, Joe, do you have any input? You, you're okay with holding off on this thing?
Oh, yeah, um, you know, I think this is a very. I don't even know if it's really a necessary thing, it's something that was brought up, probably. Maybe originally that somebody had a complaint, because sometimes we make thing, rules that maybe we need or don't need. Because I don't, you know, I've run for office a few times, all of us have run, and I've never run into any real glitches, so, um. I, 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 I'm not even sure we need this policy, but if, at some point, we're gonna need to discuss it, but doing it. Few weeks before election, probably is not a good idea.
I agree, Joey.
Yep.
Okay.
Alright, um, this morning, uh, we had a representative from Invest EAP come in and, and talk, um. Good presentation, uh, Dave and Jason and Ben were here, uh, and she answered a bunch of questions, gave us some information, it was really good. Uh, she is coming back, uh, for another one on January thirtieth at nine AM, and I would encourage. Any of you and all of you to, to be here if you can to, to talk with her, uh, it's really good information, uh, it's, it's. All, all free benefits and information for uh, town employees. Uh, and she does have a presentation that she can give for like supervisors, so things like that to give, be able to help disseminate to employees, so. Uh, it's a really good program. Uh, it's free for town employees and anybody in their household are also included with that, so. Uh, it's really good, we, I've got some information on it, we've been sending it out, so that's, uh, so, it was really good this morning, only took about half an hour. And, uh, she likes to, she'll be back in, um, and, and a couple of weeks to do it again. Uh, I gave the update on the town report, so we're, like, we're, we're closing in on that, and, uh. Those last couple of things, and I'm hoping, I'm hoping to be able to send it to. Uh, the printer on, on Tuesday, if we have everything approved and get it printed up, because that's getting really close to the. You know, the uncomfortably close deadline, so.
What's the printer's deadline?
Uh, the twenty-seventh is like. That, that, that is the deadline, and that is the day, it has to be there the twenty-seventh, I can't have it later than that, so.
Okay.
Um, but if we get it there earlier, we get it done earlier, so we get it out earlier to eliminate any. Possible delays, so. Uh, that is everything that I have.
Okay.
Okay, question. What's the deadline for people filing a petition to run for one of the open positions, isn't it January? Thirty?
Thirty, right.
How? I guess no names would be on the warning, so we're okay, it's just that has to be on the ballot.
Yeah.
Okay, and that's a different printing deadline, got it?
Yes, so this, this, they, they, they work backwards from town meeting day to say, if, because we're gonna have to mail it again, because that's. Wonderful, so that's town meeting day minus mailing days, minus printing days, you know, production days, proof days, so it gets us to that day. So, once we get it to them. We have like, they get us the proof, and then we have like twelve hours to get it back to them, and all that fun stuff, so.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay.
Anybody have any questions for Bill?
Bill, it's Carrie.
Thanks, Bill.
Well, hold on. Um, so, can we go back to the sign thing? I just wanna kind of put that, put it in there, that it was brought up on the agenda. For the sign policy, because Sarah from the school called me and left a message on my phone. Saying that the superintendent of the schools. Had an issue with the signs and also had an issue with people campaigning. Near the building like they have for years. So, I was to get that sort of situated before the next election, which would be our town meeting.
There's nothing to get situated, Carrie, you can call. You can call her back and very politely, uh, let her know that the superintendent of schools is not in charge of voting policies. For elections, the Select Board is, and the, and the, as a matter of fact. Uh, the ballot clerks are. And we're not gonna change the, we're not gonna change the format. And or the candidate's ability to interact as long as they're outside the polls. And we're not gonna change this for the superintendent. That's, that's my opinion.
I'd, I'd second that.
I heard it.
There's been no, there's been no issues, uh, there's been no impoliteness. There's been nothing but polite and respectful campaigning. I have never, ever seen a candidate. In my life in the town of Rutland ever impede a voter. Or impede a voter's progress to the polls, which is the rule on, under the state law. And as long as they are outside the polling place, that is perfectly legal.
And I could read, mind, if he had to stand out for hours in the cold, the rest of us are gonna have.
Right, a- and as far as the signs go, I mean, that's why we. That was part of the policy that we had, and that was really one of the, I would think, one of the main reasons, Mary, that we did, that we even. Contemplated doing that was so that the signs would be up. In a short time following the election, uh, preceding the election, and that they would be down in a short time following the election. So that they weren't a nuisance to the school or to the traffic for, for kids. And, and, you know, this is democracy, this is democracy, we don't, we don't wanna do things that impede democracy in this town. It's just not appropriate. We fought hard for, to have a democracy. And this is the. You know, this is, this is politics, this is the way we govern ourselves, and we've been very respectful doing it, so. And, quite frankly. Like Joey said. I don't think at this late date, we will be contemplating major changes like that to our voting procedures, so.
Yeah.
If you can tell her that very respectfully, Carrie, it would be appreciated.
Oh, I can certainly do that. Um, and also, Bill, um, to go along with your deadline for the town report. That brings it back to. Um, it has to be, so Mary, this goes back to what you were talking about. As far as if a budget or something has to be changed. It sounds like we have a doubt, a deadline for the town report before that we have a deadline for the printer. So, if, if something has.
Yes.
Well, that and the warning, the warning is part of the town report. So if something is, needs to be changed, it has to be changed before the twenty-seventh, it sounds like.
Yep.
Twenty-fourth, for sure.
Well, twenty-four is the target.
Yeah.
Twenty-seven is a drop in.
Right, I just wanted to add that, sorry, Bill, but. I just had to add that.
That it? Uh, under old business, there's one thing on here that, uh, we should. Just poll the board on. Said board to discuss the future of the delinquent tax collector position, and I'm simply asking the board. If there's any sentiment at all for changing the way we, uh. Elect or appoint the, uh, delinquent tax collector. Because we have a deadline, and I'm, I'm of the sense that the board does not really wish to deal with this. Prior to this election.
So, and I agree, I think we should leave it as an elected position at this time, and if somebody's interested and they wanna get their petition and run, great. If we find that nobody has run for it, um, then we appoint until the next election, so.
Amen, I agree.
But, no, Mary, nobody can. Nobody can run for that position, because Jim's retiring, I believe, on the thirty-first of March, which, which is after the election. So, that position, that position is not vacant, yeah, that position is not vacant until after the election, and then we'll. Appoint somebody to fill it out.
Okay, sounds right, Joe.
There, that takes care of B on, on that, and that's, uh, is there any other old business to come before the board?
Just.
Hearing none, uh, one, there's a. Yes, committee meeting updates, uh, go ahead, Sharon.
Before we go into, because I'm gonna have to go into the executive session, but before we do. Um, on the Personnel Committee, Town Lister Dean Davis, it says May. Bill, you're listening to me? Okay, I checked with he himself, and he said, I said I would. I checked with Kurt, who was there, who said Dean said he would. I asked him twice, once when that was off, once when that was on. So I asked that that be changed to Dean Davis would resign to allow someone to be appointed, so the office can maintain proper staffing.
Okay, the motion's been made to change the Personnel Committee, uh, report adding. The, uh, adding the word would in place of may, uh, under one C.
Second.
And that's been seconded, is there any discussion on this?
Well, I wasn't there, so I can't vote.
Okay, neither was I.
Neither was I.
Well, I don't know. I think we're good, it's pretty much. On the committee. Aye, yeah, aye and aye, okay, that's changed. Okay, good.
Okay.
Thank you very much, and, um, is there any other business, any necessary executive session, we have, Bill, you'll make a call to. He's on now, good, thank you, I'm gonna call for a short recess and we will convene. Uh, on motion, we will convene at, uh, at seven-thirty. Uh, to hear from our town attorney on possible contracts for employment. An update on the Cortina in litigation. And, uh, an issue of personnel. Uh, employment policies, those three things. That's if a motion were made for that.
Uh, are we gonna talk about the ballot item, that, that ballot item? We're gonna ask, uh, Kevin.
Yes, and the, and, I'm sorry, and the ballot, and, and, and suggestions on the ballot item.
And the personnel policy.
Right.
Language change, so a couple of things need to come, be maybe before we go into executive session.
Right, we need to deal with, with edge thing.
Yes, that's the personnel policy thing with the PD.
That stuff we should probably do in open session.
Yeah, we should do that in an open session, yeah.
The personnel, that's executive session, right?
No, well, the change of policy for the Police Department. Exemption on disciplinary matters should be an open session.
That's right.
Because it's a general, it doesn't relate to any one employee.
Yeah.
But anyway.
And the ballot item doesn't either.
Recess until we bring Kevin.
So, the, the motion's been made and seconded for the executive session for those purposes, including the. Uh, change that Joey was talking about in town.
But we're gonna do the police thing first, the personnel policy change. In open session.
Yeah, I thought we were gonna have a meeting first, but before we did.
Oh, you're right, yeah, you're right.
Already decided we're gonna have a meeting first before we do that, so we don't need to do that now.
Okay.
However, uh, you know.
Do you want to mention the ballot item real quick?
Yeah. Before we go in.
Before we go to.
Yeah. And before we recess.
Yeah. Where is it here? Lost track.
E.
Oh, yeah, with.
Great big bold print, at least it was online.
I know, it's just too many pieces of paper on the desk.
A shredder would take care of that.
Oh, I'm sure. Where in God's name did that go?
You wrote notes on it, it's up there somewhere.
Game one.
If. You're. If, nobody's running against you, and nobody runs against me, are you gonna work the poll?
Yeah.
Well, that's another, I think that's a.
Chris Holland looked, Chris is on, that's why I wanted to ask him.
Yeah.
Chris. Holland.
That's another Kevin question.
Or maybe it's a Kevin.
Maybe it's a Kevin question.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
No, Chris, I, I know the last time. When I ran and nobody ran against me, you said I couldn't fact work the polls, did you find out if that was a definite?
Yes, yes, that is correct, that's a, that's in the statute, like, Mary, I can't quote you a paragraph. But, uh, it's just like the town clerk is exempt, uh, when she runs, but if you're unopposed, you can work the polls.
The polls, okay, thank you.
Well, yeah, we'll just confirm that with. Well, yeah, we'll just confirm that with town council while he's on.
Yep.
I, I get back to you in the morning with a paragraph, but.
No, we've got our town council on.
He's on my clock. All right, thank you. I have no idea.
Yeah, the, uh. We have a ballot item, uh, Kevin, the, the, that was, uh, suggested by, uh, Selectman D'Nardo. Which the board approved, yeah, go ahead. Um, which the board approved, uh, for the wording for the, uh, for the ballot in March. Is shall the town of Rutland use any unallocated one percent local option tax funds? Not to exceed a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. To meet any regional dispatch obligations, obligations imposed by the state of Vermont. And, and Joe's question was, should we word that? Shall the. Town of Rutland's select board be authorized to use any allocated as opposed to just saying shall the town of Rutland use? What say you?
I think we maybe send, send it to you so you can take a quick look and give us the proper wording. Yeah, you know, the, it's, we're dealing with. A dedicated fund. In that situation and it's, and the statute gives that to the voters. Um, it doesn't. Speak to whether the voters can give it back by vote to the selectmen. They probably can. I think it's probably okay, but I'll take a look at the language. Okay.
Yeah. I think in the past, we've asked that the wording would read, shall the voters authorize a select board? To use any unallocated one percent. That's the way I think in the past, we've asked the voters to allow us to do things. So that was what I thought the, the beginning should be.
Yeah, we, we've, uh, had several iterations of, uh. Ballot items dealing with the local option tax money. I'm not sure what our, what our existing commitments are to it. Um, uh, so I don't know what's actually available. Maybe some of the commitments have expired. From, um, like for instance, the garage and are we, I can't remember if we've put anything toward the. Uh, police and fire station, the new station out of that money.
So Kevin, what we usually do when we do the budget is we pull a number, we pull a number out of a, somebody's hat. And we say that the town is going to get like, we assume, I think this year one point two million dollars in one percent options tax. And what I proposed to the board was that if there was any money above that. That instead of that money being just swept into the capital improvement fund, that we allocate. Up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to cover any obligations we might have in this new dispatch scheme that's coming out. Um, last year, I believe we figured on one point one million. And I think we were over that by a couple of hundred thousand. So that extra money just. Disappears into the capital improvement. And in, so if we were to allocate up to a hundred and fifty, if there's any over the one point. Uh, over what we've already, uh, asked for. So whatever that allocation is, if we come in this year at one point three, then. We could use a hundred and fifty thousand of that two hundred because we're under the theory that we're going to get one point one million. That was, that's the intent of this ballot item.
Yeah, I think we just need to be careful that we don't create, give the voters the opportunity to make, give us conflicting. Directives because we'd have to take a look at what the voters have voted on before. And make sure we have, with that, respect to that money and make sure we don't have a conflict.
Billy, can you?
Turn the volume way up. Kevin's really weak on there. Who sets the temperature in there? Oh, Jesus.
Yeah.
Is that better?
I believe the intent of the original ballot item was that the one percent option money went to the offset, uh, taxes. So usually that funds pretty much the whole general account. It's, it's just the money that is in excess of that. You know, right now it just. It automatically gets swept away.
No, I get it. We did, we've had so, there are just several ballot items that have dealt with. How we deal with that money. We just have to make sure that we have, we don't create a conflict for ourselves between, and, uh, this new resolution. And the, and, and other ones. This, there may very well be no conflict. I just don't have them all in my head.
Said he didn't get it, but I read it to him.
Okay. But I, I get the point. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion. On the floor for executive session. We haven't voted on it. Uh, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Uh, we're now in executive session at seven thirty.
Seven. You're going to take a little break?
Court of executive session at, uh, eight forty-three.
Move where you're turned.
That good.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? We are done. Thank you very much.
Good evening, folks. Have a good one.
Have a good.